Have we started already?
I can hear you, Stephanie.
We have not started yet.
Stand by to report in five, six, five, four, three, two, one.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the County Committee Public Hearing for the petition for the La Cuenyada petitioners with the Glendale Unified School District. It's on the proposed territory transfer between two districts. My name is Susan Solomon. I am the chairperson for the County Committee from the Fifth Supervisory District and serve on the Newhouse School Board. If you would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you so much. The County Committee members will now introduce themselves, beginning with Dr. Moore.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Sharice Moore. I am the president of the board for the Williamus Park Union High School District, and I represent the Fifth Supervisory District.
Good evening. My name is Martha Deutsch. I'm the vice chairperson, and I have served on the Torrance Unified School District for six years, and I am the representative of the Fourth Supervisor.
Good evening, Ralph Metzer. I'm representing the Third Supervisory District. I served seventeen years on the seventh.
Good evening. My name is John Tania, currently on the Roseveen School District Board of Justices and serving in the First School Advisor.
I'm the Supervisory District Four.
John, I represent the First District on the Garvey Elementary School District.
And we have two committee members on Zoom. Mr. Laplan, please introduce yourself.
Donald Laplan, retired board member down at Unified School District, Supervisory District Four. I'm remote today because I am of illness.
I hope you feel better. And Ms. Cassin-
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay. Hello.
Hi, Stephanie.
I am Stephanie Cassin. Hi. Can you guys hear me all right?
We can hear you. You can introduce yourself.
Okay, great. Okay, great. I'm Stephanie Cassin, the board president for the Sentinel Valley Union High School District. I represent the Second Supervisory District. I am on my way. I came from a ribbon cutting ceremony. It sees my delay, so I am on here until I get there, but I might get there by the time we meet.
Okay, thank you. The county committee members have been provided with copies of the petition, and we are providing this opportunity for the chief petitioners, districts, and community members to share their comments on the petition. I would now like to provide some background information on the County Committee. County committees were created in every county by the California State-
John Quintina is joining on Zoom. Okay, sorry.
The county committees were created in every county across the state of California through legislation in 1949. The County Committee studies school district organization proposals that are initiated by community members, school districts, or other public agency. The committee makes decisions on transferring territory between districts. Some are then subject to an election and recommendations to the State Board of Education on formation and unification proposals, which are also subject to election. The committee has also authority to implement or abolish trustee areas, establish trustee area voting, and reduce or expand the size of school district governing boards. The committee conducts public hearings pursuant to legal timelines and requirements and maintains neutrality, evaluating proposals without bias. The County Committee consists of eleven members, two from each supervisory district and one at large. The members are elected by a voting representative of each school and community college district governing board in Los Angeles County. Committee members serve rotating four-year terms and serve without pay. I would ask now, or we already introduced everybody, so here's a back one. Thank you. The County Superintendent of Schools serves as secretary to the County Committee. In Los Angeles County, the superintendent's role has been delegated to, well, Mr. Octavio Castella, who is currently not here, so in for him right now is Dr. Allison Deegan, part of the staff. And also here with us tonight is Mr. Eric Ross, also part of the Lego staff. Now I'll address the proposal for transfer of territory. The purpose of this territory transfer, public hearing, will be explained by Dr. Deegan. Thank you. Soon to provisions of California Education Code 35700, County Committee has received petition to transfer free parcels of territory to Glendale, USC, to La Cuenyada, USC. At a future meeting, County Committee will evaluate results of feasibility study that will be conducted by the Spanish. Notice of tonight's public hearing was published in local newspapers commonly circulated within this particular area of Los Angeles County. The purpose of this public hearing is to solicit input from the chief petitioners, impacted districts, and any member of the public community who may be affected by the proposed changes, and to obtain information from the local community to assist the County Committee in making its determination regarding the feasibility of the proposed reorganization. We have provided signup sheets for both proponents and opponents who wish to address the County Committee this evening. We will call individuals to speak in the order in which they have signed up. If you do not pick up the public hearing agenda and the public hearing guidelines, or if you wish to address the County Committee and have not yet signed up, now would be the time to do so. The signup is at the back of the entrance if you wish to speak. Interested individuals may also send comments to the County Committee or speak at its regular meeting during the time allotted for public comment. The County Committee meets on the first Wednesdays of each month in the boardroom of the Los Angeles County Office of Education in Downey, California. These meetings provide an additional forum for parties to address the committee. Additionally, we encourage you to submit your comments in writing to the County Committee Secretary. Comments can then be forwarded to the County Committee for consideration. I now ask Dr. Deegan to provide an explanation of the proposal that is before us this evening. The petition has been presented to the County Committee requesting a transfer of free parcels of territory out of Glendale to La Cuenyada. This would be a permanent boundary change, which could affect the assessed valuation of all school districts, state funding, each school district proceeds, the taxes that property owners in both school districts pay, the enrollment of any student living within the petition area currently, and in perpetuity, as well as other students. May 15, 2025, the chief petitioners submitted a petition proposing to transfer free parcels of territory out of Glendale to La Cuenyada. Education Code 35700. Petition was presented to the County Committee as required by law on September 25. The County Committee must hold at least one public hearing within each affected district last Wednesday evening on October 15. The County Committee conducted a public hearing in the boardroom of La Cuenyada. Following the public hearings, the County Committee has 120 days to study and approve or disapprove the proposal. The study may include information provided by the chief petitioners, districts, and state sources, as well as other parties. Study will focus on evaluating conditions that the County Committee considers substantive for school districts in this particular area of Los Angeles. If the County Committee preliminarily approves the proposal, the environmental study shall then be commissioned to study the potential effects of the transfer as required by the California Environmental Quality Act. If the County Committee approves this certified environmental study and moves to affirm their preliminary approval of the territory transfer, the County Committee shall decide on the election area before the proposal shall be put before the electorate at the next upcoming regularly scheduled general election for the school districts pending on the lead time needed by the Department of Labor to prepare. That's when the County Committee will notify the districts to announce situation as to whether to meet notwithstanding an appeal to the state or the administration. If the County Committee disapproves the proposal, the process would be terminated, again, notwithstanding no good standing for the administration. Important note to remember is that the County Committee deliberates on matters related to school district boundaries, although not city boundaries. Los Angeles County has involved counties throughout the state, school district boundaries more distinct from city boundaries. They are governed by separate authority and integrity. School district boundaries and city boundaries are barely- I will now explain how the public hearing will be conducted. The order in which the parties will speak at this public hearing is in the agenda and in the agenda guidelines, which were available at the entrance. The chief petitioners will have 20 minutes maximum in which to make presentations. Next, the La Cuenyada Unified School District will have 20 minutes maximum in which to make their presentation. Then, the Glendale Unified School District will have 20 minutes in which to make their presentation. Members of the public who are proponents of the proposal will be next, followed by members of the public who are opponents of the proposal. Each member of the public who wishes to speak will have three minutes to address the County Committee. The total time will not exceed an allotment of 45 minutes for all proponents and for all opponents. If a significant number of people would like to speak, either as proponents or opponents, I may do not see that. At the end of the public's testimony, Glendale Unified School District, La Cuenyada Unified School District, and the chief petitioner will have five minutes maximum to summarize their point. Would the chief petitioners like to make their presentation at this time?
With our slides. Which slide? For the petitions?
Okay, thank you. And is this on? Can you hear me okay? Thank you. So, good evening again. My name is Casey Curtis, and I'm the chief petitioner. It's my wife, Mara Curtis, and our three children, Isabella, Jacob, and Elizabeth Curtis. Which is a lot of what we're going to cover today is kind of duplicative of what we covered at the prior hearing. I thought a couple additional slides hopefully provide a little bit additional context and explanation. So, just a brief background in terms of the history, right? There is currently in process a transfer of territory of what's known as the Sagebrush area of La Cuenyada. It is presently in the Glendale Unified School District, but after a citizen's petition was filed, went through the administrative process, and this commission approved that, and the appeal was approved by the State Board of Education. It is now, that territory is set to transfer. What we are here requesting today and what our petition seeks is effectively a correction of how the boundary was drawn in that petition. So, just for a little bit of context, this is Glendale, this is Glendale Unified School District's current northern boundary. And then you can see the city of La Cuenyada is on the right there. And what we're talking about is the area that's shaded in the light green on the right-hand side that is attached to Mountain Avenue Elementary. And this is the La Cuenyada Unified School District current northwestern border. It's the same, but on the opposite side, what we see is the red area is what's attached to Palm Crest Elementary. And the white on the left-hand side or the western edge is what's covered by Glendale Unified. So, kind of putting these two territories together, what I've highlighted in the purple here is the quote Sagebrush area that is currently set to transfer. So, as a result of this commission, committee's determination and the appeal that was affirmed and the election that has gone through, this is the territory that is currently set to transfer. And what we are talking about are three lots. They're on the eastern side of Pickens Canyon. They have La Cuenyada addresses. They have La Cuenyada zip codes. All of their neighbors, except for the ones across the canyon, are in La Cuenyada. But they are technically in unincorporated La Cuenyada. And because of how the boundary is going to be drawn as part of the transfer process, these houses are going to be left out. And what we would like to do is remedy this so that these houses are not effectively separated on an island by a flood control easement from the remainder of the Glendale Unified School District. So, this is just a slightly higher bar, sorry. And you have to sit down. This is just a slightly different map that we had prepared. There was some question before about where these houses are located. So, we pulled this from the county's GIS system, and I have highlighted in purple what are the three houses that are at issue. So, you can see Ocean View Boulevard runs more south there. And we have a small private driveway. Our driveway, private driveway goes out to Ocean View Boulevard. It goes out into the city of La Cuenyada. It goes out into what is now going to be transferred into a different school district. But these three homes that I've highlighted in the purple there are technically in unincorporated Los Angeles County. And they are separated by flood control district from the remainder, flood control district's easement from the remainder of the Glendale Unified territory once the transfer goes through. The lots, just a little bit of context, the lots actually transverse the parcel, but there's a division, and the division that's reflected there is the flood control easement, which is kind of the, it shows as a creek. It's an array. It's a dry canyon. Just a little bit, again, same thing. This is an aerial image I've highlighted in red, the three houses. Again, you can see Ocean View Boulevard runs north-south. And what we have is these three houses that are on a private driveway. Their immediate neighbors on three sides are going to be now in a different school district from themselves, where they're separated by Pickens Canyon from the remainder. So, just a little bit of history of how this kind of came to light, what we've done since then and what we're trying to fix. So, we learned about this when Measure X, which was the measure to transfer the vote on the territory transfer, which passed with about 92% of the vote, wasn't on our ballots. We thought we were part of the transfer. When it came to light that it was not, we inquired, we were trying to figure out why it wasn't on our ballot. We were trying to understand what had happened. And that's when we learned that because of how the maps had been drawn when it was affixed to the petition, we were being left out. We had originally tried to work with the county to see if there was a way to just correct the boundary when the final maps were drawn before the transfer happened. We're told that was not feasible, so we would have to file our own petition. So, in terms of the history of how these lots were inadvertently excluded, what I've included in these next couple of slides is copies of the material that was submitted in support of the original Sagebrush petition. So, as you can see, this is actually a poll. I pulled one of the slides from the original Sagebrush petition. That's what's on the right here, or the presentation in support of the Sagebrush petition, I should say. And you can see that when they drew the boundary, they thought, or inadvertently thought, that it was Pickens Canyon. And so, a lot of their materials were referred to, all parcels as being part of the transfer. They called the city border Pickens Canyon. It's not quite Pickens Canyon. It's Pickens Canyon with the exception of these three lots. So, when we saw these materials, we thought we were part of this, though without the intent was to transfer ours as well. We enrolled our kids through a Sagebrush permit at Palm Crest Elementary, but we have since learned, discovered we're not. This is kind of another slide. I pulled this from the brief in support of the petition that the original Sagebrush petition was filed. And you can see that it describes Pickens Canyon as being the intended dividing line. Again, we're on the La Cuenyada side of Pickens Canyon. We're not on the Glendale side of Pickens Canyon. They refer to the territory as being isolated, that being the dividing line. And, you know, again, we're on the side of the canyon that is attached to La Cuenyada. We're not on the other side. Just another example, this again from the brief that was submitted in support of the original Sagebrush petition. It referenced in the text, had old historical maps, and talked about Pickens Canyon being the natural historical barrier or boundary of the city of La Cuenyada. That is true with the, you know, this weird exception of how we got separated. We also, again, this is a copy of an email that we'd sent to the chief petitioners when this came right late last year. And they had stated that was not their intent. Their intent was to transfer Pickens Canyon, but they assumed that the maps that they attached was merely following up to Pickens Canyon. They didn't intend to leave these three lots on an island by themselves. In terms of the kind of geographic separation, we went over this side last time, but we are separated by 900 feet from our neighbors across the canyon. But you have to drive two miles, it's about almost a seven-minute drive, to get to those neighbors. We don't interact with those neighbors. They're across a wash. They're across a flood control easement from us. All of our neighbors who we interact with, who are we a part of, are part of the territory that is now transferring. This is the city map from the local agency formation commission, LAFCO, that shows the city boundary of the city of La Cuenyada. We covered this last time. Again, what we're talking about here is this little, I'll just point it out. Section right here. That's, they're in the city's sphere of influence. It is probable, according to LAFCO, that we are going to be future- It is probable, according to LAFCO, that we are going to be future annexed into the city of La Cuenyata. We are associated with the city of La Cuenyata, but we are not technically within the city limits. Again, just to show the little indent here, I've highlighted the three lots. You can see that it matches the shape does with that, with, with what is on the LAFCO map. Last time, there was a question about what this other little indentation here was. I pulled this from the county GIS website. We can see that it is a lot that is undeveloped, that does not have street access. I was not able to determine since last week who owns it. It's possible that it's owned by the flood control district. But, but that is at least half of a lot that is also on this side, but it's presently undeveloped. Um, again, this is the, we covered this last time. This is the Glendale, city of Glendale's sphere of influence. Shows the same thing, that the portion of unincorporated La Crescenta that is attached to Glendale Unified School District is within the Glendale sphere of influence. We, on the other hand, are more attached to La Cuenyata. Just very briefly, I covered this before, but, you know, we think that in this circumstance, the education code is consistent with our request to have the boundaries drawn in this fashion to make sure that we are not isolated from the remainder of the school district by a flood control easement. The education code says that the school districts shouldn't be formed or organized in a fashion where territory is separated by portions of other territorial districts. Again, that's not exactly what's happening here because we have a flood control easement. We do, we are, you know, the lots do, they all cross and we are, you know, connected, but, but there is a flood control easement in between. The remained, all the other lots around us that were previously in our school district, our neighbors that were in the same school district on are now going to be transferred out and these, these lots, if the petition is enacted, will be left behind. Just so we can cover this before, but some history of Pickens Canyon, it's a dry wash like the Oroosaco. It becomes a seasonal river. It is, uh, does, does get debris flows when there are mudslides. Kind of famously about 100 years ago, it killed, it resulted in the big New Year's flood in, in, in Montrose, northern, northern Glendale. They killed 45 people and destroyed 400 homes. The rest of the slides we already covered. I did them last time. I don't feel need to, to belabor the point. I think the really the important one from our perspective that is the most significant is the second one, which concerns the, uh, uh, organization of school districts based upon a community of interest. Again, I think we have substantial concerns based upon how the district, the, the boundary is going to go with the transfer happening and us being excluded. Where literally our neighbors next door are not part of the same school district, our friends, our kids' friends from up the street would be in a different school district. We don't have anything in common with the people who are across the wash who are two miles away. We are, we are community is the folks who are around us. So that, unless there's any other questions, I would just respectfully submit because we've covered the same factor, the factors again, I don't see a need to repeat them. Thank you.
Now, with La Cuenyata Unified School District.
Good evening, Susan. Good evening. It's nice to see everyone again tonight. Thank you for two nights of giving your attention to us. Thank you for hosting. We appreciate our Glendale counterparts. And I will be brief. I'm Wendy Sannan, I'm the superintendent with La Cuenyata Unified. And just a, we are in support of the petition and we just have a brief slideshow. Our first point is location and geography. The three parcels were intended to be part of the original petition. The three parcels are contiguous with the Sagebrush territory. And as the original petitioners referenced in narrative form, though, these three parcels were always included. They are east of Pickens Canyon, which is for decades, the narrative that was used to describe the Sagebrush territory transfer. Again, with location and geography on this, on the third slide here. Pickens Canyon is a two-mile-long canyon which separates Sagebrush from the rest of Glendale Unified. And there's no ability for vehicles to trans, transverse the canyon. And so as the petitioner said, in order for them to connect with the homes across the canyon, it's anywhere from a 1.2 to two-mile drive. Their identity, their neighborhood, all of that is currently with all of those who reside east of Pickens Canyon. I think in terms of the next slide, part of what the petitioners are trying to convey to the county commission is that they have a strong community identity with the Sagebrush neighbors who are about to, to transfer and with the La Cuenyata Unified School District where currently of the three houses, only one has school-aged children and all of those children attend La Cuenyata Unified. Community identity is a very important part of the criteria and they feel like they were a part of the original petition. They, they put effort into identifying and to having the voices heard for their desire to transfer. And then inadvertently they were left out. And so that would be a, a, a nice issue to rectify as we move forward. There are another criteria that we have addressed over the course of the life of the original petition. And now this petition is operational efficiency and student services, including these three parcels provide consistent and equitable access. This would be access to all of the La Cuenyata Unified School District programs and services that are already established or are pending and that will be established for those once the territory transfers. Unifying these parcels under SCUSD will ensure continuity of services and prevent confusion for families who share the same streets, the same schools, and the same zip code. It's, I think it's just a little bit of common sense. We have worked, well, this has been a petition that's last, that's gone on for decades. And the petitioners kept bringing the petition over and over and over. I've been part of this last iteration of this Sagebrush territory transfer. And it's taken a lot of time, resources, and energy from both the Glendale Unified School District, the La Cuenyata Unified School District, and LA County. I know that Mr. House and Dr. Deacon have put in, you know, endless amounts of hours and the county commissioners have as well. The layperson's understanding of their city is essentially their address. And their address is La Cuenyata, Flint Ridge, 91011. Whether you can drill down, you talk about the unincorporated portion of La Cuenyata Flint Ridge, or if you talk about these three homes having the voting precinct, or if you talk about the sphere of influence, I don't think that's what the, the average person goes to in terms of community identity. If this petition isn't granted, I would imagine that we will see it again and again like we did the original petition. And I think my, my advocacy is just one of reasonableness. We've all gone through this for a long time. Our districts have worked very, very hard to maintain a very positive and cohesive relationship despite the strains of these petitions. And I would just like for us to be able to tie this in a nice bow and be done with it in its entirety. And so I would be, on behalf of the La Cuenyata Unified School District, I would say that we support this petition for the variety of reasons that I just mentioned, and I'd like to thank you for your time.
Glendale Unified, would you like to make your presentation?
Okay. Good evening, I'm Jaco Rassell, the proud superintendent of Glendale Unified School District. I appreciate my counterpart, Wendy Sannan. I think I'll be retired if this comes back to me again. Okay, Wendy, so tonight I wish I had to present, but I'm going to turn it over to my assistant superintendent, business services, Bill Young, and he'll present our power plate tonight. So nice to meet everyone, man. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Bill Young. I'm the assistant superintendent, business services with Glendale Unified School District. And thank you for the opportunity to present the district's position on this particular petition. So just a quick reminder, as you've heard through the, the testimony provided earlier, this has been a lengthy process with Sagebrush. But as a part of that reminder, during that June 2024 State Board of Education hearing, it was clear that there was not going to be any further territory transfers related to Sagebrush. But yet, yet here we are today. And I share that in advance of my next few comments. And then as I wrap up, really a summary of what the Glendale Unified School District's position is. We understand the, the petitioner's request and rationale to transfer the three properties proposed today. Geographically, we understand that process. We understand the perspective. Okay. Okay, I'll repeat that. Geographically, Glendale Unified School District understands the petitioner's request and rationale to transfer the three properties proposed today, as presented earlier in testimony. From my perspective, from the preservation of district resources, specifically time and funding, right? It has been a lengthy process with the Sagebrush territorial transfer. In this particular case, for the three properties presented today by the petitioner, GUSD takes neither a supportive nor oppositional position regarding the three properties as presented. To be clear, on, on behalf of the superintendent and the governing board of Glendale Unified School District, moving forward and for the record, we would oppose and firmly oppose any additional petitions seeking additional district boundary adjustments within Glendale Unified School District. So, so in summary, the three petition, the petition for the three properties today, we take no stance on for nor against, but any property request or transfer requests in the future, we will firmly oppose. And I'd like to thank you for your time and the opportunity to present this information.
Thank you very much. Okay, now, I will ask for the proponents to speak. The proponents have three minutes each, up to 45 minutes for this section. The proponents want to speak.
Bernie R. Also.
Oh, good evening. My name is Bob Stoffer and I'm one of the three parcels involved. And I just want to thank everybody for their attention to this matter, to my neighbor Casey for the work done in this body of both school districts. Oh, there we go. Okay, I'll be brief. I happen to be a product of the La Cuenyata High School District, or La Cuenyata School District. My stepchildren are products of the Glendale School District and we're all thriving. So I thank you for that. You know, I would, I didn't pay a lot of attention to this because my stepchildren finished the Glendale schools in 2016 when everything was Sagebrush. However, I will say this, at that time, the Sagebrush was a cohesive unit. And, you know, and very much separated from La Cuenyata because all those kids went to school together. And I was sitting here thinking, if these three parcels remained in Glendale, like, it'd be tough for anybody to find anybody to carpool with. You know, they, they wouldn't trick or treat with this, you know, with the same kids. It would, I just think that cohesiveness factor is the, is the primary thing. And so, you know, I want to thank everybody for your attention to this and that's really all I have to say.
I just want to say I like my school. It would be kind of hard to get to a different school that's across that canyon. That's, that's really all I have to say.
And then just to be sure, Casey Curtis, you're good? All right. There's no one online and I don't think we have any opponents.
We have no one online.
Right. So then at this point then, I will ask the chief petitioner to summarize your findings.
We're happy to wait.
Happy to wait. Okay. La Cuenyata? Good? Glendale? Oh, all as well. Okay. Let's see, that takes us to, that, yeah, back into, back to home.
Just a quick question. When were the homes developed?
1955, mine.
Thank you. Julius?
Yeah. Sure, you know, I have a question for Glendale. Outside of the, that parcel that he, that he identified, I guess that's to the west or?
North.
The north of the property, is there? Besides that, is there any other parcels that are out there? No, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. O'Pon, do you have any questions? Mr. O'Pon, do you have any questions? Miss, Miss Castaneda, are you still online?
Yes, I, I don't have any questions, so thank you.
That concludes this evening's public hearing. We invite your written comments and input at our regular monthly meetings. And written comments can be sent to the Los Angeles County Committee on School District Organization here at the Los Angeles County Office of Education, 9300 Imperial Highway, Downey, California, 90242. May I please have a motion to adjourn, to adjourn?
So.
It's been moved by Dr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Bostrom. We'll call votes.
Bostrom?
Aye.
Estimera?
Aye.
Beavis?
Oh, sorry.
Uh, Deutsch?
Aye.
The Platts?
Aye.
Hatcher?
Yes.
Moore?
Aye.
Nunez?
Aye.
Quentzina?
Aye.
And Saul?
Chair votes, aye. Again, thank you everyone for coming tonight, making a adjourn.